February 28, 2022, Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
All right. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Art, could you lead us off on the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up first is public comment. Should anyone have anything they'd like to say? Please state their name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am?
I'm here at Free Shore Road. Would you like permission to use the ALB system on Saturday for our meeting?
You can just...
I couldn't hear you, Deb. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We would like to be able to use the ALB system on Saturday when we have our meeting in here for the Democratic Party.
Sure.
Well, they need a support person.
Do you know how to work it, Deb? You got it all figured out?
It's RPC.
I have a lesson today.
Are you comfortable?
As comfortable as I am with technology.
All right. It's weird. Is your meeting is in here?
Yes. Yeah. And I know how to plug my computer into the...
Yeah. I don't...
I just told you that, so.
Yeah. Usually it's an issue of making sure that people can plug into our technology and use our equipment as opposed to just using the roof.
Gotcha. Are you OK with it, Carl?
Yeah. My concern is just hopefully if they're aware of how to use it. Other than that, we would end up having to put a support person here.
Right.
And that would cost us money to staff it and put somebody here.
There will be people in the building on Saturday that know how to use it if you need a hand.
Oh. Yeah. What time? Yeah. There'll be people around, so just reach out to us. You're fine with it, right?
What you do is for both. You do it for one, you do it for both.
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
Right.
That's a foregone conclusion.
Right. Yeah. Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that we're on good, solid footing.
I don't think anything differently.
OK. As long as you don't, then I don't.
Great. No problem. Let these folks have a seat. You sure?
Yeah, I'm back, so anywhere.
Must have screwed something up then. Anyone else in the room for public comment? That one's signing in. We'll just wait a second here. Public comment? Do you have anything for us? Yep. You? You sure?
Come on, Lucy.
Nothing, Lucy? All right. Anyone online for public comment?
I don't see any.
I don't see anybody. OK. So that concludes public comment. It's 6:05? Sure it is. Roos Bar, Town Hall Roof and HVAC Project. Folks, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, are we still roll call?
Yeah, you should probably say who's here.
Yeah. So actually, yeah, let's... You guys need to roll call for your meeting?
Yes.
Is this a finance meeting?
It's joint.
OK.
Yep.
We have Mr. Mish online. Are you present? Terry Mish?
Yes. Yes.
OK. Art Fidel, present. David Meckey, present.
Mary Danielle, present.
Paul Conne, present.
Welcome, folks. That's everyone?
I believe so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
How about this board?
Are we present? We're not present.
I'm just saying we should call it out.
I haven't been present in three years.
Well, I'm just saying.
All right. Go ahead.
You're the chair.
Joe Deedee.
Just say who's here, Mr. Chairman.
I'm here. Mr. Fox.
Mr. Mogul.
Mr. Mogul. Mr. Steinhardt. Robin Solak. Good. Very good. Good.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
There'll be a quiz.
I think it was better last week on Zoom. All right. Gentlemen, how are you this evening?
Very good, everybody.
Good. Did you sharpen your pencils? Pen? OK. Yeah, I know. You have the floor.
OK. Andy Bar for Roos Bar Associates. Ken Beck from BLW. We're here to just give you an update on some things and some changes. This project, as you know, is a roof replacement project and an HVAC upgrade.
Yes.
OK. I think the first thing to probably talk about is timing of these things because we, as we've talked about in previous meetings, the roof, the intent is to do the roof this coming summer and the HVAC project is going to take longer because of availability of products and things like that. So most likely that would be... The best way to approach that would be to do that the following summer or fall or when...
Right.
But essentially not this summer. And so in order to get the roof out in enough time that we can get good pricing, availability of product, et cetera, we are recommending that the roof, that the project be split into two and the roof be bid as soon as possible. I have brought with me, which I will be leaving with these gentlemen, the 95% complete, which is almost basically, we just need to decide our dates and things like that, with the specs and drawings to do the roof project. We're going to be bidding in the same way that we did the fire station, which is with Bid Docs Online, which is electronic bidding. So the front end and all the contractual documents that we're using that we have here are exactly the same as we did over there. A couple of years old, but I don't think anything has really changed on that. And as we talked about, we had, I think we, the consensus was, and I think we agreed that it was going to be the PVC simulated standing seam roof similar to the fire station. Whole roof will be replaced, product code for insulation, and the gutters are being replaced and downspouts are being replaced. And there is some decisions to be made as far as colors, but they don't need to be made today.
OK.
The colors will be basically what the way it's written is that the color will be from the manufacturer's standard colors. One of the things that, as far as splitting them up is, and this would be the case even if it was bid as one project, there is the existing, old existing unit, which wants the HVAC unit, which is inside the attic space, which will have to be removed. So the way that I've written it in the documents right now is that there is a section of the roof that will be shown on the drawings, that the actual removal or replacement of the roof will not be done as right now. It will be coordinated with the HVAC project so that they'll remove the shingles, remove the wood, the wood deck, the plywood, and that portion of the building structurally is such, it's not trusses that you can't cut, it's actual joists like traditional framing. So they can remove the joists, take the old unit out with a crane, put the joists back, do plywood and roofing, and then it's done.
Question. How long are we going to have the blue tarp up there flattening around?
No, there will not be a blue tarp.
It's orange.
That's a bad look.
What they'll do is they'll, basically, because in the back of the... Let me actually go with you about seven times. There's, I don't know if you can quite see it. There's a triangular shape of roof. Yes. There's, so essentially the triangular shape of the roof in the back where the, where the unit will go, comes out of right here. So they'll, they'll leave that part with the existing roof. They'll leave the shingles there and they'll tie in, do a proper tie in there so it's watertight. And then that'll come off and then they'll take it, and then they'll put the new PVC roof back on at that point in time. So no, it would not be a tarp. It'll be, you know, it'll, because it most likely could potentially have to go through a winter depending upon what happens with the mechanical stuff.
So Andy, who comes back and does that? Does the roofer do that after the HVAC guy completes his section or does the HVAC guy come to this?
No, we would, we'd want the same roofer to come back and do it because you have a warranty situation. So what it's written is that they, so what we've put in the documents right now is that it will require a second mobilization, a re-mobilization for them to come back and do that.
OK.
But it's a pretty isolated area and it would be, it would be a pretty quick thing to do. The only other way to get that equipment out would be to cut it up into pieces and maybe take it out through the louvers and it's just...
It's supposed to really have stuff for it back in.
Yeah, right. There's things, right. So it's going to be pretty cumbersome. So to get, I mean, it will give a great opportunity to put any other equipment back in, right? I hadn't even thought of that part of it. So it's, logistically, from, well, from a contractual standpoint, it causes a little bit of complexities that we're going to have to keep the contract open, but, you know, if we can, there will probably have to be a reduction retained, but hold the contract open so that then they come back and they do that and tie it all together.
Do you see any issues with the current world conditions affecting your sourcing and logistics and materials ordering?
The... We're hearing a lot of different things. From an insulation standpoint, this is all flat stock insulation. It's not tapered insulation or anything like that, which is, there isn't as much of an issue with that. We know that there's an issue with EPDM and some of the PVCs. Because we're going with the color, it's pretty much a custom run. I mean, you know, they run it for the job or the job anyways. So it's not something that's going to be a stock item. It's not something that comes from overseas. Everything is, particularly the PVC. Sarnfield, who did the manufacturer for the fire station, they're located in Canton, Mass, and they manufacture here. So I don't think that that'll be a huge issue. Probably more of an issue with...
Well, that's my next question. What about the PVC?
Yeah, it all depends which way we go. Some of the bigger, like, pieces of equipment, like the package unit that we were talking about originally, that it has a lot of complete items, but some of the smaller pieces of equipment, if we're going to do some of the BRF, that stuff is more readily available.
So I think...
So you're going to go over the estimates for each phase?
Well, right. That's what I was, I was going to... So the roof, the roof estimate is virtually the same as it was last time. It's right around $850,000, $850,000 for the roof. All right? That has not changed. And then moving towards the HVAC stuff, that, there's been some changes potentially in scope. Who wants to sort of explain that to our last meeting?
Ken?
Yeah, so originally we were contracted to get the piece of equipment out of the, out of the attic space, the air handler and with the hot water coil and replacing the air coolant desiccated on the ground out of that yard there. So originally we were looking at a package unit out of that yard adjacent to where the condensing unit is now ducting up into the existing louver space, new hot water coil there and then reusing the entire distribution that you have here now. So what that gets you, that gets you new heating and cooling and ventilating and filtration equipment. What it doesn't help you with is any problems you actually have inside the building, which apparently there's a lot of controllability issues. You know, the equipment's getting old. It's not well controlled. You have heating and cooling problems throughout the building. So we were asked to look at, you know, what it would take to upgrade the system overall in terms of, I think that you were a very good operating system where you eliminated those problems. So we looked at two different options. We looked at a similar type setup with the package piece of rooftop, package piece of equipment in the yard, ductwork covered in the existing louver space, reconnecting to the existing ductwork, and then replacing the VAVs with VAVs with hot water reheats. So taking that large reheated coil, system volume, and distributing to each of the VAVs so that you can control flow and temperature at each of the VAVs and all the controls. The second option we looked at was something a little different in that we will eliminate the VAVs and the hot water in the building and go with a BRF type system. So every, if that's a refrigerant-based heating cooling system, so everywhere that you had a VAV, you would put a BRF vanco unit connected to a refrigerant piping system that would be able to individually heat and cool those spaces. So we would reuse existing duct distribution within the building, replacing the VAVs with a BRF vanco unit connecting into a refrigerant pipe, refrigerant system outside, and then work from the back of the building to the front of the building so that we keep the existing system operational and take things off it as we added things new onto the new system. So it really helps in terms of phasing and, you know, interruption to the building. And what, and also as part of that, at the very end, we would take that air handler out and put a couple of small ERVs in to do your ventilation. Again, reusing the duct system you already have to distribute the ventilation throughout the building. So we did, we analyzed those both options. The BRF is significantly more energy efficient than the package unit and hot water reheats. It's also considered sustainable. It's all electric based, very, very high efficiency. The estimates came in for the VAV, 1.1, they, 1.132 million and the BRF, 1.8, 1.18, I'm sorry. So about $50,000 is the difference. You probably save, you probably save energy very quickly with the ERVs for your ventilation system and also the BRF system.
So David, what are your recommendations on the system?
I like the system he's talking about right now. One of the things that he did touch on was the boiler downstairs. That boiler is original to the building. It's called an atmospheric boiler, so it vents right up through a chimney. Efficiencies, I mean, if you did an actual efficiency on it, you'd probably be in the 60s. It's terrible. But by going to this type of system, the size of that boiler is going to reduce as well. And the gas being will stop spinning quite so much.
Yeah, so your, your hot water usage would, you know, be almost eliminated. So we would reuse your baseboard heat that you have there here now as a supplement only. So your base heating would be the BRF system. And you, because it's the same electrical load as your, as your air conditioning load, there's no really impact to your service. It's just more of a redistribution of some power.
OK. And the efficiencies of the proposal, which was option number two in your most recent letter, are really amazing over what we're doing today. You had to bring the whole building control system up to the state of the art and David wouldn't be plagued with all the complaints he gets throughout the year, you know? It's either too hot or too cold in many of the spaces.
This building, it has a huge energy load because of the way it's currently operating. It's way overventilated. It's not very well controlled. You have very poor efficiencies. You know, the aircool condensing unit outside is 1.2 KW or 1.3 KW per ton. The equivalent order specifying will be about .8, so you're saving that. Plus, not only are we overventilating the system now, we'll be adding energy recovery to that. So you'll be saving 75 to 80% of your energy in heating and 50 to 60 to 70 cooler. So instead of when you bring in zero degree air on a, on a zero degree day, it'll already be preconditioned by your exhaust air to about 60. So just think about all that energy coming in and going out of your building that you'll be able to recover.
Is there any difference in the maintenance cost of option two and one?
I think it's, I think it's pretty similar. You know, you still have a lot of these... I think the VAVs have, they have controllers, they have dampers, they have valve actuators on them. The vanco is inside it, actually going to be a little simpler. It's going to be a small motor on it and that's about it.
So we still need to, like we have now, we have a company that does controls and then a company that does mechanicals?
Yes.
How long is it going to take us to make up the extra $50,000 for option two in terms of energy savings? Anybody calculate that?
I just, I could do that. Do you know what you're spending for electric and gas per year? Here?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've been giving them to our energy industry. We can provide that too.
Yeah. If you do, I can do a quick evaluation.
It's always a very interesting bullet point to present to people that have to pay the money.
It's going to be, it's going to be very quick. I think you're going to take your bill close to half based on how you're operating now and based on what you'll be able to do for the heating and cooling. I mean, just about the outside area you're bringing in here, you're actually bringing in, your, your whole building is being controlled by this one room, the ventilation you need for this one room. So every other room in the entire building is totally overventilated. Which you're just spending lots of money to do that.
You don't think the roofing price is going to change because they got to come back?
It'll be minimal because it's such a small area. I mean, it really will be, it's, that's probably about a one week off, which they would have had to do, but it's the re-mobilization.
Right.
And all, and the only real re-mobilization will be, there's a little bit of material that they'll be sort of being stored, but it can be stored on site, which, I mean, it's not a lot of material.
Right.
So I think we can try to, I, it's going to really have a, probably...
But it'll be in the quote no matter what. So we'll have a real price including that, so...
Yeah. It will already be that.
There's no surprises in the end.
Yeah. And that's why I want to make sure that it's built into it.
Right.
Not saying to them, oh, by the way, we don't want you to do that portion of the roof.
Yeah, for a year.
Until tomorrow, I mean, until next year.
So what we'll have, Randy, is if, Andy, if you get the boards OK to do this first bid process, that first phase tonight, you go out, you'll have a really good number for town meeting.
We'll have a real number.
You'll have a real number for town meeting and then you'll have the other number, which is, will still be an estimate.
Yes.
And we have to put all of that into one vote.
Yeah.
Because we can't vote for a piece of the project. We have to vote for the totality of it.
OK. Got you.
David?
One thing that I could get down and talk to you about, a little more about that, about tightening up the timeline so that we begin the project move, so it flows into the time we're not going to be using air conditioning. At that time, by the time you, you're finished here and you're working your way back here, it'll be in a season we won't need AC. We can pop that and you can keep going because once it's out, it's done. And then this roof can flow in one smooth line. That just means we have to come up with a timeline which we can follow.
And I, and I think that's, I think that would be the intent.
I think it is. I think the issue we're concerned about is if you don't have a vote till May...
I think that, I think that's fine.
You know, and then it depends upon the, you know, the lag time of what it takes to order the HVAC parts, whether 12 or 16 weeks?
I think with the BRF, I think it's short of...
Than, than the other vote?
Yeah. Well, I think the vanco's themselves are pretty rarely available, so makes you working in the building.
Right.
If we have to wait a little bit for that, we can work around that.
OK.
But I think, I think if, you know, if, you know, you're able to put this out in May, you know, for a bid, get contracted by June, you should have a decent commitment by May or May or later.
Well, he's talking about putting out a map. We'll have the actual number for...
I'm just talking to the HVAC if we have to wait for that vote.
Yeah.
If we put it out right the day after the vote, he's got contractors to the bill or June, you should have a decent commitment by, by May or September easily.
OK.
So, yeah, I mean, so I guess basically what we're looking for is, is do we get a notion, you know, I mean, can we proceed with bidding the roof project and then, you know, proceed with the design?
So we're just weeks away from the HVAC to be figured out? It's not like...
It's not like you can do this, though, in a couple of days, though.
Right.
No, it's going to take, it's probably going to take two months to get this designed.
OK.
There's a lot of little parts.
So that won't go into the town meeting then with the HVAC?
Oh, no. He's saying that, that would still be on the same warrant, but it's all part of the same project.
No, I'm with you.
We have a budget number for that.
There you go. There you go. Right.
And, and we can refine that more, you know, as things...
Understood. That's what I was getting at. Right. So we have a number.
So there'd be two parts. The, the roof number will be a real number.
Yeah.
And then the, the other number, which is part of the whole thing.
Yep.
But at least you're not going in there with the whole thing being a guess.
A guess.
But that's just within the estimate you just gave us, right? It's within that. Does that, does that include the contingency and the design and other side?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So it's got all those things already baked into it.
Yeah, so...
And then we have to take that number and then add on the clerical works.
No, I get it.
I don't think we included the design in this, but what is, what is your...
It's May 17th.
It's the third Tuesday in May.
We would need three weeks to bid, right? Three bid conference, subbid, gentleman. I mean, if we could be going soon, we might be able to try to get a bid date four weeks ago, or three and a half weeks before that, so you had a number.
So, right, so if you, if, if we can get it so that the bids come in literally even the day before...
Right.
You can amend your, on the floor, the document about, and then you'll be able to say, hey, it's a real number, which certainly is better.
Yeah. Because we are fortunate with that with the roof before, we got the real number.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I think it would be better to have a real number just because close, even in a month, but depending on... But, you know, if we can get moving quickly, you know, seven, we can get this done in several weeks. It's going to be close to eight, anyway, so by the time I have it, we can have a number for you for that date. Now, if you give me what your costs are now, I can, I can do a quick energy savings estimate for you anyway.
Yeah, we are producing that information, I think, for the green energy.
Right. We're a green community now, so we had to produce all that information, so we can get it, we can probably get it to you very quickly.
Until we, it's a bit criteria number five, it would have been approved as a...
Well, technically, OK.
But that's happening now.
Right. Right. We're in the process. We're finalized.
We could give you a good amount of numbers, so that you can have an, have an idea. It's not going to be down to the dollar, except for, you know, it should be relatively good.
But just remember, not all of our energy costs are HVAC.
Right.
You got electric, you got lighting, you got...
Computers.
So I don't know what portion, maybe a larger percentage of it.
Yeah, so we, we do this a lot, so we, you know, we estimate buildings too, so I'll talk to my electrical engineer, you know, they'll be able to tell me what you think on each portion of it to be divided on.
So the good news is electricity is going up anyways, right? So even with all the savings, it'll be even, you know, with the check. Right? I mean, I hate to say it that way, but it's great to have all these savings.
But the rate of growth will slow, right? I mean, that's the important...
Oh, absolutely.
And then when electricity comes down.
When? When?
One, one thing that I want to make sure that you also understand.
Yeah.
There is additional design costs for Ken, for BLW in this because we've obviously drastically increased the scope of our...
Right.
Or mildly increased. Or mildly increased.
Mr. Sutton's over there smiling since him and Arthur are part of that.
That's fine, because we're just gonna take it out of the, we're gonna take it out of their budget, so.
But that's, that's because of our own people adding things. What, what value does that add to it?
Value add to what?
The, the cost of that, how much more of a dollar.
What are you thinking?
Well, I, I don't, I'm, yeah, I, I gotta look at that. Yeah, so what, Ken will give me a proposal, which I'll forward on to you, because it goes through us, but I think, for us, it's not, it is no real.
It's a pass through, yeah.
Yeah, because the front end, I mean, what we, the part that we do to it is gonna be the center. So, but it's, it's his, he's gonna get all that.
You know, we've had some great meetings with, with Ken here, and I, I, I trust this guy. I know he's looking out for our best interest, and he's a lot to me.
Well, you gentlemen, you know, you guys have been spending quite a bit of time over the last couple of months with him, and so we, we have to trust that you've gone through that process, you've asked for low counts, I know you've gotten a lot of information that you've reviewed, and so, if this is the direction we need to go for the long term, it's the best thing to do, then we, we have to go with your recommendations.
And, and also, I mean, the whole green community thing, this helps out with all of that, too.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, this is, this is your, your main building here.
There are substantial rebates for this type of system, too.
Yeah, they, they know, in our discussions with them, they know this project is being contemplated, and I gave them your name, your contact information, so I'm hoping at some point that they'll be contacting you or obviously here.
Yeah, that's fine.
You just speak to them.
Yeah, I mean.
But yes, no, we're also interested in that, in fact, when we, you know, when we did this building originally, and some of the other buildings, we did get energy used.
Yeah, I think the ones now, that, that they're pushing to all electric systems on it.
Yes.
The numbers of the rebates are becoming very impressive.
So this, I'm sorry, so two things, this becomes all electric?
Well, the new system we're putting in, but we're gonna still reuse portions of the 315 gas. We have a lot of baseboard.
Yeah.
Around the building, we're gonna still reuse that.
Okay.
That's gas.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna use that as supplemental, so on your first stage, your heat will be the sustainable system, your second stage will be what you have here now. So it's actually kind of.
Vice versa, right now, that perimeter needs to be made, and the VAV boxes are where they are now in the secondary.
Yes, because there's no real, there's no real heat component to other than that one portal, so you can't actually put heat throughout the building, because if you have an interior space, you will overheat it. But, yeah, so your all-electric sustainable will be your primary source of heat.
So then, follow on question to that, can someone take the action to make sure that our onsite generation capability can carry that load for a prolonged outage?
We've already looked at it, so your, your service here is basically providing air conditioning through older, much less efficient piece of equipment, so your actual electric usage should go down.
And even on the heat side, so if we have a prolonged outage during the winter, because this was a, a refuge place when we were out for, you know, 10 or more days here.
That's when you have the gas as a supplement, too.
Yes.
As long as it's still, it's carrying the load now, I get, I just wanted to put it out there. And then the second is, who, who is the coordinator of figuring out what rebates, and whether it's from Green or Forever Source, or whoever else can offer a rebate to offset?
So we'll, we'll contemplate.
Yeah, David and I, and Arthur, Tim will do that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good effort, it really is, you know, because there's a lot of input from the owner's side, you know, in terms of the actual forms that have to be submitted, but we'll provide all the backup for it, you know, so that, you know, it gets done.
And even during the design, so if there's design objectives that you have to hit in order to get it, it can be done upfront, right?
Yeah, most, most of this is prescriptive right now, so it's based on tonnage.
Okay.
So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Doc, did your question include the capacity of our generator?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what, if we have a generator out back, I don't make sure it's gonna carry this if we're out for a week again, like we did in that October storm, you know?
We'll double check it, but I'm sure you're fine.
Yeah, that's 175 kilowatt.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty good size.
Yeah.
One of the nice things about this, too, Doug, down the road, you're gonna have to address the boiler situation, and right now, that boil pumps out 180 kilowatt for everything. What happens down the road is that now that we like the load on it, and we go with our backup perimeter heating, we can get into something that's full modulation, and we can modulate boil the temperatures and reduce our uses even lower. So it's something down the road that we're gonna look at also. Our boiler's now at 1.6 million BTUs. Your average home, actual BTU load is probably 40 to 70,000. We're at 1.6 million.
Yeah, we're gonna take a lot.
So we're gonna be dropping that down substantially.
We're gonna take a lot of load off of that.
Well, that's one of the things we wanted to do, is to put through the green energy. When you become a green energy community, you qualify for certain things, so, you know, maybe the furnaces in some of the municipal buildings, of which this is one of them, that would be one of those identified projects.
Correct. Gotcha. Okay.
So you, we need, you need to have, take a vote to authorize him to, to do this business.
Okay, for just the roof?
And, and so when we vote, is it specifically to, to approve the roof project, which would include the more expensive HVAC option, or is it just?
Just the roof.
It's the whole, it's both of them.
But specifically, like, so, I, I just wanted to get clarity, you started by saying, originally, you were asked to look at HVAC.
Yeah.
And I guess that was like a pound for pound, you know, what we have today.
Yeah, so what we were, we weren't looking basically from the air equipment. We were asked to replace the air handler, and the condenser needed to come up with a better option than having that piece put in, in the attic, get it outside, and reconnect the exhaust system.
Okay.
So we weren't doing anything from that point here.
So, uh, thank you, so what I wanted to understand though, is, and then you went on to say, but what I looked at was two options that are more cost effective, and so now we're really looking, and I think somewhere along the line, you said, the recommendation was we just settle on the 1.8 million dollar option, because it would be more cost effective than anything else.
So, so I guess, so we were looking at just that from the air handler outage portion, so the question came up, okay, I have all these problems inside the building, okay, so it's not gonna help us with any of that. I'll have better, I'll have better air conditioning, better heating, better ventilation.
Yes.
So, so they said, okay, what can we do from the air handler edge?
No, I think, I, I'm not trying to get the technical, you know, but trying.
It's the pricing.
The vote was, was it?
Right.
Was it to approve a 1.3 million dollar option, a 1.8 million dollar option, or just to approve a project? Is that what we're voting?
Carl, what do we?
Well, it has to be one single borrowing operation at town meeting.
Correct.
It's gotta be one, one vote, one, you know?
Right, are we voting on a number?
I'm with Dave, I'm, I'm confused as well, so there's, there's three options on the table, right?
Yeah.
So there's the original.
There's the original plan, there's the VAV plan, and the VRF plan.
Right.
And I, and I wrote 132, and I didn't catch the second, the VRF plan.
So the, the first one was 1.132. The second one was 1.18.
1.18, oh, okay.
Less.
So it's about a $50,000, 48,000 difference.
Right.
For VAV versus VRF?
Yes.
And what was the original?
It was, I think it was 500, 700,000.
So that, that, I think that gets better, right?
As far as answering the question anyway, the money gets worse.
And that's driven by our new supervisor.
Agreed, but I just wanted, level set from where we were last meeting, so.
1.18.
1.132 and 1.18, VAV and VRF, right? All right, so, and Dave and Arthur, what, do you guys have a recommendation to, to this group as, if you, you know, a direction that we should?
VRF?
Yeah, I would strongly recommend option two.
Huh?
Option two.
Yeah.
VRF.
Which is really option three.
Which is really option three.
Which is really option three.
Which is, okay, option three.
Yeah, option three, right, yeah. My references, second letter is having it as option two.
Well, that's option one.
First was long gone.
Well, that's one, okay, well, one.
So if we go down the whole, we, if the 1.18 plus the 850, add that together, we're going down the whole project.
Correct.
Plus soft cost, plus clerk of the works.
Plus clerk of the works and some other stuff, so we, we won't know that number till at least he gets a better estimate, and then Andy gets a, you know, the final number for the, the roof business.
Two million bucks.
Two million. All in, two million.
Do we have the additional monies for the design already encumbered?
Um, we're gonna look into that.
Once we get a number.
I don't have an estimate for it.
Okay.
We'll get you that.
I'm sure we have that somewhere.
I imagine we're gonna deal with the Friday valid plan condition, because they helped us perform some other stuff, so we're gonna talk to them about it.
Okay.
To help us out.
No, I don't have any. And that's probably a small number versus the 2 million, Russ.
Tiny, tiny number, tiny number.
Versus the ratio, it's probably very small.
Because, I mean, these guys probably did most of your work for you.
Oh, boy.
All right?
Thanks, Russ, and I'm.
I'm trying to help out here, I'm trying to help out here, buddy.
That statement didn't help us.
Look, I don't have any problems making this motion.
I mean, I mean, Andy, you're correct with what we're on, but at least with those other two systems and your number, Ken, and other, you've already put in the oversight and the A and E and all those other numbers in, right?
Yeah, uh, well, it's gonna be a little bit, some of it, yes.
Right, but not the design part of it. Your, your change services based upon their recommendation.
Yeah, this could be a little more work for me, because now I'm kinda independent of Andy, so I'm, I'm gonna probably be running this project myself versus Andy doing most of the.
Yeah, once, once we get to that, I will be here less, but he will be here more.
Yeah, so this is a little more work, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be.
And, and can I ask one more question before we, this one, option three, does that include the replacement of the controls in order to run this thing?
Yes.
Soup to nuts, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's the secret to making all these things actually work.
Right, it is.
Wacky talkies all over the place.
Well, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, no.
Yeah, you don't see many systems like, designed like this now. I mean, most, most things that are VAV, you always have reeves on them.
Right.
So you have better control, and you're, you're always fighting the way that it's playing.
So wasn't, well, wasn't that the code 25, 26 years ago?
Well, it is.
Designed by the low bidder and built by the low bidder.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I think, you know, most, most systems now realize the importance of having that extra level of control with the reeves, you know, any VAV system loses, you know, I, I don't, I won't do it without reeves, because it's just, it's always, you're always gonna have problems.
That's what the school said.
Well, I will make the motion, because I'm tired of, in the wintertime.
No, it's the right way to do it.
Having people open windows, because it's too hot in one room.
Yeah.
Somebody over here freezing.
No, it's the right way.
It's, it's time to go forward. I thank you for making your recommendation.
Yep.
Because we would have spent 700 or 800,000 dollars and still had problems.
Yep.
So thank you.
Yep.
This is the smart move to go, so I will make a motion to go forward with the roofing and air conditioning HVAC project in total.
Who's voting on this, both boards?
No, just you.
Just us, okay. Guys, do you have any other questions? You comfortable? We're not comfortable with the number, none of us are, but it is what's in front of us. All right, so motion was made.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor, Joe, DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug, move on.
Terry, did you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Do you need to put in there, we're gonna bid separately, proceed with the roof bid right away, and?
So moved.
Yeah, we're all set. We understand, we understand.
We just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Somebody's, yeah.
We'll rate it up the right way.
Don't give an eye on the timeline, boy.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
The bid doc does work very well.
It is.
We used to have to print up all the bid cards, go up under the printer, bid everything up, send it all out ourselves, get deposits, bring it back in, give it to the subs, now it's all electronic, it's all seamless.
It's less expensive, too.
It is. Couple hundred bucks, not even that bad.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Staff time?
It all works well.
It does work well. They run a, they run a good operation.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about weather.
You could have waited, whatever.
All right, people showing up for bid openers.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we need to vote to adjourn, I believe.
Sure.
Unless you'd like our company.
I would, but you're more than welcome to stay, yeah, we'll be here for a couple hours tonight, you wanna stay?
Let me tell you, we will.
You take the.
Aaron has their own seat. No. All right, I need a motion to, Chair of Finance, to be important in this meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second the conversation, no, all those in favor.
It's gotta be a roll call.
All vote, all vote, R, aye, K, aye.
Karen, aye.
Paul, aye. Terrence?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I would say good to see you, but I couldn't see you at all.
I love this day.
Yeah.
Dennis is the new change of manager for, uh.
Yeah, Dennis is here.
Dennis is here. Hello, Dennis.
Being very patient. Thank you, Dennis.
We're gonna get to you later. All right, so next up is the change of manager for Old Ranch Golf Club, Golf Course.
Yep.
So I need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Motion to open the hearing, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe, DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug, move on, aye.
Wonderful, I have to read any paperwork to be entered, I don't have anything.
Have to read legal motions.
Um, we didn't have to post.
Oh, that's right.
So read, read legal ad, no need to advertise, so I can waive, or we can waive the reading. We'll waive the reading?
No.
Waive the reading?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can't hear him.
All right. Can't hear what? Can you hear, okay, good.
No.
You guys can't hear? Sorry, guys, I'll talk a little louder.
Yeah, I can't hear.
You can't hear me?
No.
We redid the room, so you could hear us better.
You missed me so much.
Oh, now I recognize the voice, yes, I missed you.
Yeah, I missed you.
All right, so we're here tonight for a change of managers at the Ranch Golf Course, okay?
Dennis.
Dennis here is on Zoom, behind me somewhere, and we don't have to read out the, the advertisement, because we didn't have to advertise. So I have any paperwork to be entered? No.
Just the application.
Just the application that's in front of me. The new manager is going to be, if we vote on it, Dennis Henry Jr. from Westfield, correct?
Springfield.
Okay. This is wrong, says Westfield. But, okay, that's, we can fix that.
Well, Dennis, now you're gonna move to Westfield.
You gotta move to Westfield, Dennis.
Move a little closer, alright.
Do you want me to give you the address you gotta move to?
I was gonna say.
I'm not gonna read out loud. Okay. Alright, so, ask anyone to speak, is anyone here in favor of the change of manager that would like to speak in favor? Anyone on Zoom would like to speak in favor? Leave your hand. No hands being waved that I can see. Alright, is anyone here against the change in manager? No one in the room, anyone on Zoom? Not that I can see. Alright, so now we have a general discussion regarding change of manager. So Dennis, sell yourself.
New guy coming in, last year was my first year at the ranch, we had a great year, looking to continue that this year. I'm localized, born in Springfield, went to East Long Meadow, and reside in West Springfield.
Wonderful. And you have all the certifications that are needed?
I do.
Folks, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Mow, Mr. Fox?
Uh, Dennis, no changes being planned?
Uh, there, there's a lot of changes being planned, um, we, we are insul, uh, currently insulating our wedding venue, so we will hopefully be looking to do some, uh, winter events at the ranch. Um, we bought some new equipment, you know, trying to make the place a little better.
All I can advise you on is if there's any permits that needed to be pulled, please pull them. Thank you. Nothing worse than a building inspector showing up aggravated.
Right.
That's it. Right? Just, let's be honest, you know?
Yeah, that's...
Everyone has the best intentions, and the next thing you know, whoa, I was supposed to get a permit? I didn't know. Plus you want the tax money. Alright. I don't see any other questions. I'm just looking at his license. Passport, yeah, I don't see the address, okay. Alright, we'll get back over here. Um, motion to close the hearing.
Russ Fox will make the motion to close the hearing.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion to close.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Okay, before we make a motion, any more discussion? On it?
No, sir.
The only thing I will figure out for you, Dennis, is why this address doesn't match your address, and we'll get that figured out. Okay, so if you can call tomorrow, talk to Robin, and Robin, just figure out why this...
They did it online.
Oh, they did it online?
Yeah.
Oh, Dennis, this is your problem, you screwed up.
They'll take care of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Alright, I need a motion to grant the manager change.
Russ Fox will make the motion.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
And here's your serves tape, thank you, I see it. Sir, you're all set on our end? I'm not quite sure what the procedure is after this, but we approved it, so have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, you as well.
Alright, Dennis.
Dennis, just call me in the morning.
I will, thank you.
So I can do the Form 43, and we'll get that corrected.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, have a nice night.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Okay, acknowledged payable warrant 2219B dated 2/22/22. There's that date, huh? And the amount, the amount of $536,938.21. I need a motion to accept the minutes dated 2/7/22.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
I also need a motion to accept the minutes from 2/22/22.
Omnibus motion for the exec session at the same time?
Yes. We can do that, too.
Yes, second.
Second.
Okay, I thought you were making... Yeah.
Alright, all those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Okay, we're going to approve contract amendment number five with Fussin O'Neil for Bungalow Street Engineering Design.
Thirty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, I'm looking for that. Yeah, do you have it, sir? For three thousand five hundred dollars.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favors, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Yes. Okay, authorized contract extension with P.V.P.C. for Green Energy Communities Certification Services.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgun will second.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
With merely just a time extension to June 30th, there is no cost.
Alright. Accept COA member...
Donna Charon.
Thank you.
Sharon.
Resignation. Right?
Yeah.
So we need a motion to accept.
Uh, Russ Fox will make that motion.
With regrets, Donna's a lovely lady, I wish her all the best here, and, um, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Alright. And now the associate member, Carol Smith, to a full-time member.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Thank you. And then it says to add Elaine Boucher as associate member.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgun will second.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I. And Hemmich is a special law clerk. She's suitable for training. In cursive, too, so...
Yep.
Secret code for...
Accept resignation from part-time dispatcher, Rowley?
Andrea Rowley.
Andrea Rowley.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Can we send a letter of appreciation, uh, for her years of service as a part-time dispatcher?
Absolutely. Okay. Accept Springfield Police Department grant in the amount of one thousand three hundred dollars for drug take-back with education and disposal, and disposal activities.
Russ Fox will make that motion, gladly.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Can you entertain your question?
Sure.
What is that, drug take-back?
It's, it's a grant that the police, uh, get on an annual basis, and it's for an educational purposes.
Oh, so they, oh, so it's a program where somebody can turn drugs in?
Yep.
Yeah.
There's a green, there's a green bin in the lobby of the police department.
Yeah, if you should have some.
That we can, we can drop off expired or unneeded prescription medication.
Yep. Approve letter of understanding for services with...
Ken Stomsky?
Ken Stomsky, I know, we didn't, I want to screw up his last name. Chap, uh, Channel 15 Director.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Approve Department of Fire Services Safe for four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and Senior Safe, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollar grants.
Russ Fox will make the motion for both grants, uh, to the Southwick Fire Department.
Doug Mowgun will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
New business. Mr. Fox, do you have any new business?
The only thing that I had under new business, I'd, I'd like the board to consider, uh, issuing a proclamation or a statement in support of, uh, the country of Ukraine, and a condemnation of the, uh, invasion by Vladimir Putin's Russia.
Okay.
Is it a motion, or is that...
Yeah, what are you...
I'm, I'm, I will put it in the form of a motion if you'd like.
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Anything else, Mr. Fox?
That's it.
Mr. Mowgun, do you have any new business?
I have two things. One, um, I want to absolutely recognize and commend, uh, the Southwick Fire Department, Southwick Dispatch, and Southwick Police for an incident that occurred in our town, uh, late Saturday night. Our ambulance was involved in a very violent collision with severe injuries to a person in a vehicle traveling, apparently in the wrong direction on College Highway. Um, the, the performance and actions by the two EMT medics that were in that ambulance probably saved that woman's life, and despite their own injuries and the severity of a, of very high-velocity accident. The calm demeanor by which they commanded that scene until the other people arrived is a, a product of their bravery and the training provided by the Southwick Fire Department. The response by our dispatch, Westfield Fire, um, and the Southwick Police Department to secure that scene and, and make sure that everybody got out of there as best they could, is commendable, and I'm certain that at a future date, we'll be having some kind of, um, uh, presentation to those individuals for their performance, uh, that night. That was a devastating incident, um, thank goodness that both of our EMT, uh, EMTs are okay, and, um, you know, and obviously just if everyone could have a thought for, for their, um, good fortune and good healing as they recover from this. Uh, second thing is, on a total change of subject, is, um, I was speaking to, um, the Park and Rec and, um, Senior Coordinator, I don't even know what her title is now, she hates the one that I use, so I won't use it here, um, regarding, uh... Cindy Sullivan? Ms. Sullivan, yes, Ms. Sullivan, Council on Aging, correct. But I won't use the title that we normally use. Was discussing, she's had a lot of interest in people wanting to rent, uh, Wally Park and the pavilion, and along with some of the, which they've, uh, they've increased the price of, the, the day rate by more than, by double, actually. Um, at, and the, the Park and Rec sets that policy, which is great, but her request is to go back to her board, but she wanted to hear from us as, uh, the License Commission. We have traditionally not allowed an applicant to apply, that's not a nonprofit, for a one-day liquor license for that facility. And I told her that I would bring it back to this board for discussion, because she thinks that, whether it's, uh, food service and/or, or, um, having the ability, availability of a one-day liquor license may be holding them back from renting that pavilion more for high school reunions, big, larger family events and stuff at that pavilion. My suggestion to her, and subject to further discussion here and with other people that are smarter than me about this kind of thing, would be, is this something that, A, we should consider, and B, if we should, would this be something that we could have a list of providers that would be, that would bring that service, so that you would avoid some of the stuff of, you don't want people bringing, you know, have absolute kegger rager over there, but you would have a, a firm, or firms, on a list that they could choose from to bring that service to the park, and then, you know, subject to all the other one-day liquor license permits if necessary. But I just wanted to bring it to this board under new business for, you know, discussion and, and... That's all I had for new business.
Okay. We'll think that through a little bit and, uh, go from there, because there is, yeah, I'm, I, I haven't even asked maybe six times. And I, I just said we don't do unless you're a nonprofit, and it's still tough, we don't just do it.
I get, I, I understand, but I mean, I think, you know, you know, I, um, Cindy chided me that, you know, every year at the budget hearings, I ask them to show them, show us the revenues that they're bringing in based on the expenses we're incurring up at Wally Park, they've been doing a great job, COVID aside, with, you know, bringing in additional, uh, revenues, whether it's field rentals, now with the pavilion, we just spent the CPC money to electrify and light that place, and the, the rotary concerts were very well received. There's plenty of weekends and opportunities to, to rent that out. I don't know that liquor is the key to making it work, I don't think it should be, but you see that there is a certain clientele
Yeah.
that wants to have that, you know, whether it's a light refreshment or what have you, with, with their, you know, family reunion, wedding shower, you name it. So I think it's worthy, at least worthy of discussion.
Yeah, I agree with that. And we'll, uh, we'll look into it and bring it back up, sure, we got a few weeks here.
Hey, I'm gonna make a suggestion, I should probably have this discussion with Park and Rec, Cindy, Board of Selectmen, Police Department, Fire Department.
Yeah.
You know, and have a work session, maybe, to, uh, go over the ins and outs. And we might even want to have Town Council represented there about the liability issues. You know, I mean, I, you know, most of the events we've had up there have gone very smoothly. But all you need is one bad event, and, and, uh, we could pay a serious price, so...
I hear you.
So, I, I, I'm gonna suggest a work session and bring in all those people together. And maybe we can do it prior to finalizing the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, it won't take long, it's just the pros and cons of everything.
Right.
It really comes down to the lawyer, you're absolutely right.
Right.
Is it a good idea, and why is it or isn't it a good idea?
Right, right.
That's gonna...
And then...
Actually, Carl, maybe we can send a quick email out tomorrow to the attorney, just to get a, uh, a thought on what his thoughts are on, because they handle so many other municipalities.
And maybe we could, another suggestion, I didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Cindy could, uh, maybe talk to some other communities, I'm, I'm thinking of like Look Park in North Hampton.
Right, exactly.
Exactly what I told her as well.
And how do, how do they work it? You know, and what's, what's their policies and procedures? You know, uh, do you have to have a police officer there for there's so many people? I.e., uh, limited hours, uh, interaction with other people in the park at the time, you know?
Insurance certificate?
Insurance certificate, all that, thanks.
And that's why I was, you know, in our discussion was, my thought was to have a vendor who would be duly licensed and would be the responsible party, not the town. You signed a waiver already, I get it, we should have a roundtable, my whole point was not to just say, okay, sure, you can bring your cooler furrow of what have you, but you have someone who comes in and provides the service. And I did ask her to look into Stanley Park, but that's also a little different, because it's not owned by the city of Westfield, it's a private entity. So she, but I, we did mention Look Park, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure there's others out there, too.
Yep, absolutely.
Russ, Russ? I was just gonna say, in regards to Lake Wally Park, you want to make sure that they have insurance, there's a big liability issue. There's a certain amount of spectators that you do have to have security with due to the insurance. Also, you need to ensure that this city can provide, like, additional insurance, which is a little bit of that. So you have to make sure that, that is covered, because if something happens, you know?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, uh...
What she says.
Right, and, and, and I, I would just, uh...
I don't...
I've been here a few years longer than some of you gentlemen, and, uh, I can remember one particular issue.
I'm aware of that issue.
People lost their lives, and, and the town was in a very bad position.
Rather quickly.
Very quickly, and, and people, even with insurance, kind of abandoned the town of Southwick very quickly.
Yep, I, 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 we get it.
I just, I just wanted to bring it up, that's why I think we can get the, you know, a bunch of people in a room and talk about it, and go through the pros, cons, and if it's a no, if it's a non-starter, it's a non-starter, but if it's if it's something that can be discussed, and maybe there's a way...
Well, it needs to be discussed, because we're asked every year about this.
Yeah, more than once, right, and then, and then there's the, you know, well, if they do it, and they do it, well, then, there must not be an issue, why only not, you know, so it...
Yeah, you're right.
It just needs to be had to discuss.
Yeah, just get it out there and figure it out. Carl, anything for new business?
I just want to let you know, I, I have provided you the, uh, that draft that Ken had produced for the Assistant Chief Administrative Officer position.
Yep.
So you should be, uh, each taking it with you and reviewing it, and preparing to comment on it in the future, so that we can get to the point in the future where we can, uh, post the position.
Yep. Appreciate that, sure. That's it for you for new business? And Russ, did you have new business?
I, I...
Could be that was it?
That was it, just that one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Does someone out here have new business?
I just want to mention, I want to talk to the town council, because in C.O.C. we have events at bounds, we have a lot of kinds of insurance, police, and...
Why not? It's your meeting. I listed your name wrong?
You're making me Irish, I'm French.
Oh.
It's actually G.I.G.U.E.R.E.
Wonderful.
Oh, G.I., give me it again.
It's Gulf India Gulf United, as I wrote.
Thank you.
Anything else from the audience tonight? You sure?
Anyone else's name we spelled wrong?
No, we're good?
Did we lose, uh...
Yeah, I had to unplug it, because my battery's flat.
Oh, okay.
It's still behind you, they're still standing at the back, don't worry.
Okay.
Yep, okay, so we're done with new business and second round of public comment. Alright. I don't have any new business, so, um, under old business and dates to remember, is the same old, same old. North Pond violations, appointments for boards and committees.
I have a teleconference with Town Council this week on this issue.
Teleconference?
Teleconference.
Oh, alright.
Well, if we're gonna use cursive, I can use teleconference, right?
Yeah, no, no, that's good. Town Hall roof design, we talked about, the sewer system, boards and committees and procedures, White Street layout, municipal buildings HVAC, truck parking with air brake.
That's in our folder, right?
Yep.
What are we doing with that?
I believe Russ was gonna speak to the
Sorry.
Police chief about it, because, uh, I did send the information to the chief from the town attorney.
Right.
Because Russ had, uh, questions he wanted to get resolved through the, uh, the chief himself, because before it was the safety officer that was at the meeting.
Correct. Okay, the STM 18MOR articles are due by April 1st. Lake Closure Protocol Approval of Revisions. Didn't we get something for that?
You take, no, the, you, you, you have information, it's in your packet.
Yeah.
But you, after done discussing it last week, you then put it on hold and wanted to think about it through.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Do you want to think about it more, or...
Well, no, I mean, I want to go back, I believe we said we'd give a vote on the White Street, uh, proposal.
Right, so, Mr....
This, this meeting.
Right, and the proposal that you had in front of you, Attorney, um, the town attorney called us, and he just...
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
Because the, Mr. lawyer and his client were good with it, but the, um, Cogmont Heights Association, they want to have an adjustment made in what that document is, so that is being done, and that'll come back to you in the future.
I would hope Cogmont Heights Association gets some kind of legal bill out of this also, because I know we're...
Well, they have their own person, yeah.
Do they?
Yeah, they have their own counsel.
Good.
Raymond Zentler.
Good.
So, so Ryan did call and say that it's not quite ready yet because of conversations his office had with our engineering department.
Right.
And some other factors, so that will be coming to you as an amended, um, sketch or plan to be adopted, and then, of course, that will also give rise to a town meeting warrant.
Okay. Thank you. Wonderful.
Well, we've attempted to rectify this thing
Yes, we did.
For several months, but, uh, we're getting there. Very slowly.
No, it's, it's, I get it. I just, the investment is the investment.
Now, back to the Lake Closure Protocols.
Yeah, Lake Protocols.
This would be our second reading, so I'd, I'd make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, and, and in, just a note, there was another note in our file tonight that, from Chief Landis. Basically, they don't have really enforcement on the old protocols, so we're not gonna have really great enforcement on this protocol, but I, I think we should adopt it anyway, it does make sense.
It does. You know, we do say the lakes are closed, I mean, ninety-nine percent of the people do
And they, and everyone was very, very good about it, right, absolutely.
Because they're, you know, for half of them, it's their, it's their frontage, they don't want it wrecked.
Nope.
They got millions invested into rocks and everything they do to keep their, their parcel nice, you know?
I just want to make sure that, my question last week was, are we doing something that now we have to figure out if there is, we have to put a mechanism in place to enforce it, or there was one.
Right.
And there, there really isn't a great one now, so there won't be one in the future, but it'll be easier to patrol anyway, because there's not supposed to be anyone in the lake, not, just no week.
Right, right.
So I think it's fine, and I'll second the motion and take it to a vote.
Alright, all those in favor, Joe D.D. I.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgun, I.
Alright, that's all I have, anything else?
Exec tonight?
Joe, just one other thing under this old business is, Joe and I are gonna be meeting with the mayor of Westfield on, uh, Thursday.
Yes, on Thursday, and I'll be nice, Russ, I'm not gonna bring up the gas line under the bike trail that I can shut off with that wrench. I'm not bringing that up, Russ. So when they bring up the sewer bills going up higher, I'm not gonna bring up how I can shut the gas off, I promise, Russ, not gonna bring it up.
Alright, Vladimir.
So when the, when, when the fees go up for the sewer and everything else out of Westfield, I'm not bringing anything up. You don't have to worry.
I'm not worried at all, Mr. Chairman.
Or that our fire department is...
Or that our fire department is still covering the north end of West.
Yeah, yeah, we're still covering, right, until that bridge is done in five years. I'm not bringing that up either, Russ. No, I'm gonna smile and take it like you did.
I know you're gonna be very diplomatic about this meeting.
I already got it figured out. That's fine. Hi, how you doing, buddy? I'll see you in a couple days, I like cream in my coffee, so he knows. All right, that concludes our evening and we are going to an executive session, not to reconvene.
I'm sorry, quick question, is there ARPA funds available to offset the HVAC proposal?
So the ARPA funds, the first round, we've kind of used most of it up on sewer improvements, I think a water line issue we have, stuff like that. The second round of ARPA, there's some lines in there where we can play with some of the stuff and we're kind of just, just looking at that list, because the list keeps expanding of where we can use it and where we want to use it. We had a real good year with free cash, it looks like, so there is some wiggle room here and there, I think. I don't, I don't think our, you know, we got some other avenues to look at as time moves on here. But yeah, ARPA's.
Plenty of projects.
And unfortunately, you know, Westfield got, what, they get eight million in ARPA, 10 million? It's a big number, we got one, or we got two, two shots of 1.2.
Yeah, we're gonna get 2.8 something, a little under 2.9.
Oh, there you go, so that already went up some.
We already got one.
Inflation.
We get another allocation in June.
There you go. So, yeah, we're looking, you know, there's always so much money, you don't want to use it for reoccurring things, as you know, because they won't be there the following year, you know, so you gotta be really, like you say, we gotta watch where we use it. The first batch we used on projects that hopefully lasts 50 years, you know? I mean, Russ will still be around talking to Westfield, but the rest of us will be long dead. So, all right, we're now gonna go in executive session.
Would you read that, please?
Yes. A motion to go in executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter C 30A, S 21, 2 and 3, Chapter 214, Section 1B, and CMR 20-03, 1B. Executive session, Chapter 30A, 2, 3, 214, Section 1B, CMR 29.3, 1 and B. Exemption number 2, move to go in executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with a, with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Chair must declare move to go in executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Chair must declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. Exemption number 3, move to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining that the chair move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene an open session. Move to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. A person that shall have a right against unreasonable substantial and serious interference with their privacy, the Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Doug Mogul, aye.
Folks, have a great night and see you next week.